Good morning, Commissioners, Mayor, and City Manager. We're the FIT Center for Leadership in Community. I'm Nancy McHugh, the Executive Director of the FIT Center. We are grateful to have this time with you today. We know it's a wonderful opportunity for us to share the work, and we're very grateful for the collaboration that we have with the City of Dayton. We think is really deep and very transformative. So the FIT Center for Leadership in Community, we've been around for almost 25 years in partnership, as I said, with the City of Dayton, who's been deep. We're going to talk about several of our programs and really highlight some new work that we're doing. You know, our vision is we work to partner to advance the common good. We focus on transformative relationships within community. So within the city, within neighborhood associations, with our nonprofit partners. And we really think about how we can collaborate around shared goals. We have several new programs. If we looked at this just a few years ago, you'd probably see about five up there, but you're going to see nine. We're going to start off by talking about our newest programs and some shifts in programs. Then we're going to move to some of the programs that have really, within the FIT Center, had a long history. I'm going to let my colleague, Amy Gemantis, the Director of the Urban Research Initiative, talk about this program.
Thank you, everybody, for this opportunity. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Amy Gemantis, and I'm really happy to be here. Thrilled to have this opportunity. I want to call out the donor for this grant, Tim and Mary Riordan, who gave a gift to the university and to the FIT Center that would create the Urban Research Initiative. And we are working both with neighborhoods and nonprofits, and then also working on city projects that they bring to us. We also have a faculty and staff advisory board that includes a variety of leaders at University of Dayton, including Governor Taft, who's been wonderful on the advisory board. And one of the things that the advisory board is doing is when the gift was set up, the donor had allowed for some consultation times, and faculty members have been working on proposals for consulting. We can also pay for consulting that the city chooses with their own selection of the individual that'll provide that service. We are also providing a lot of technical assistance to nonprofits and the neighbors through helping them with grants, with training. We've been doing training in grant writing, grants management. We've also been working people with people with budgeting skills, financial stewardship. A lot of the work is actually helping people develop the infrastructure. You know, sometimes it's been helping people sit down with bank statements and figure out how that would go into a profit and loss, you know, statement. We also have been working on program evaluation and data. And that's a big gap in the community, especially for the volunteer center, the agencies. And a lot of the work of the Urban Research Initiative has been to try to connect people like to the city plans, the neighborhood plans. So when they think about writing a grant, they're actually looking at the latest recommendations that the city have made, because those plans are wonderful. And we want to make sure that they're, you know, using that information. We've also started, at first, we were just training people on how to look up census data. That turned out to be difficult because of all the neighborhood tracks. Neighborhoods don't match exactly the census tracks. So we've actually started taking information, like the Ohio Children's Opportunity Index, and breaking that down neighborhood by neighborhood in terms of their results, breaking down some of the allocations, some of the assets in the community, neighborhood by neighborhood, so that they can show that they've got a leveraged share from all the wonderful work that the city is doing and other partners in the community are doing. And so we help them with that data. We've been doing what Nancy calls robust editing of grants, and that's how we've been able to work with organizations to get $380,000, which is not much, but when you consider a lot of these organizations are volunteers and we're applying for grants where they're showing a balance sheet of $5,000 as being their total assets, you know, it means that you're writing a lot of very small grants. And we've also done training with the Imagining Communities Symposium and also with Dayton Foundation, who's also working to make their process and foundation access much more equitable, particularly for BIPOC and underserved communities. And then we're working on products with different organizations, videos, manuals, and websites. I think I've run out of time. But, and so I owe the city a project. My husband fell, "Never leave your husband watching a four-year-old while you're out of town," because he managed to fall down the stairs at my daughter's house and, as a result, had four surgeries. So I've been sort of out of commission for the last couple of months. So I'm sending you stuff Monday. So thank you very much, and I want to share this with Sharon.
Hello.
Hello.
I don't know if this is close enough, but I do think you can hear me now. I just can't hear myself.
It's green, it's green, she's good.
I am so glad to be before you. I am the Director of the Health Equity Activation Think Tank. With the key word on activation, we don't need another conversation, we need action. And I was really honored to be put in this position through the support of the Dayton Foundation and then the incredible support of the FIT Center in putting together an ideal of what would a think tank look like. And they gave me the honor and the freedom to sit and think what would best bring about change and change in systems in Dayton. Was able to convene people that were people whose voices had not been heard. Cornel West refers to wanting to know the problem, you have to ask the people who are suffering. And what I've found in doing that is that the people who are suffering have ideas, and they have great ideas, because they're in the pain, and people don't want to stay in pain. So created a circle of leadership from Gadaha to the woman on the street who lost a baby, from, you know, Dayton Children's to someone who's been trying to nurse and not successful, and learned how to be a lactation specialist so that she could feed her own children. And in this circle of people who are actually experiencing the problem and partners who are working on the problem, we were able to come up with six priorities. And these six priorities are not up there, they're embedded in my heart. But the six priorities were to address black infant mortality in the Dayton and Montgomery County area. And in looking at Dayton, they came up with some incredible priorities from the mouths of the people experiencing it, saying, "We need to address racism in healthcare." However that's done, however you want to call it, let's figure out who our target audience is. So Group One began working on that. The second priority, Action Group One, they like to be called, the second priority was to look and see what exactly is happening that's been done, and how can we support the people that are already doing things? How can we enhance what's here? The third priority was one of my favorites, and it was to look at the neighborhoods that are affected. When we look at statistics, as we all know, they can be manipulated for good or for evil, and sometimes it's no intent for good or evil, they're just reporting. In this case, I believe that we were just reporting what's in Montgomery County. They wanted me to dig and find out what's in '02, what's in '05, what's in '06, what's in '17. So we did that. And then we did something with that idea. The third priority was, that was the third priority, the fourth priority was to have legislative voice, legislative voice, and we were able to obtain that by getting someone to actually be on the doula advisory board at the state, who is part of HEAT, who is part of the Health Equity Activation Think Tank, so that we had our ear in our eyes on what was happening, how things were going, and giving input. Also joining with POM, a group that works with prenatal and postpartum depression with women, and how it affects their families. Had a chance to go recently to Columbus to meet with senators and legislators to talk about the problems that are happening in Dayton and to share what HEAT is doing, as well as addressing mental health. One of the greatest opportunities that we had was to look at increasing the impact of doulas. Research from the National Institute of Health, as well as the CDC, as well as programs that are going on, show that there is evidence-based, that there is a probable causation between having a woman having a doula, whether it's prenatal, perinatal, or postpartum, and having a healthy baby with bonding and mental health support. So when we looked at the numbers, I like to combine things, and it's like, okay, if these are the numbers that have the highest zip codes of black infant mortality in the City of Dayton, what if we recruited women who lived in those zip codes to be doulas? And what if we were able to give them a stipend and award so that they could become certified donors through Dona of America, which is the most recognized in the world, so that they could go ahead and they could become doulas and leaders in their neighborhood? It was a great timing, because the governor had put through a bill, since it wouldn't pass on the floor, that we were going to reimburse doulas through Medicaid, and he wants this done by October or November of this year. When we thought about this, we thought that it's not enough to just have a doula. We need leaders, and we need leaders that are in the neighborhood, on the ground, that the community can look to for questions, answers, and support. And so Central State University Extension has joined with me in providing education for these women. We started in May, and we're going to go until February. They're getting certified as postpartum and prenatal doulas and birth doulas, but they're also getting education on which business is right for me? Which one do I want to choose? How do I do record-keeping? How do I do taxes? How do I set up a business? Central State is committed to walking us all the way through to getting EIN numbers and helping us file papers. So these 10 women are going to be 10 businesswomen in our community, from '02, '06, '05, '17, and another '06, because they had high numbers. And they are going to be able to have economic sustainability for themselves. I want to look at the metrics and see what happens when we increase economic input into a family and how that affects them. What I'm most excited about is the partners that we have. We have partners, most importantly, our community, certainly the support of the Commissioners. And I thank Commissioners lots for coming and celebrating with us when the doulas were first launched on their journey. We have the support of government level at public health, working with us to get us the right numbers, to get us the right people. We have Queens Village, we have Gadaha, we have pediatrician Dr. Patterson, and we have a OB-GYN, Dr. David Donrash, who are working to make sure that infant vitality becomes a reality in Dayton, Ohio. And I thank you for your support, and I thank you for the drive that you have behind having excellence in the city and being able to match that energy with providing you excellent citizens who are leaders in what they do.
Thank you, Sharon.
Good morning. My name is Samantha Kennedy. I direct one of our student programs called the Dayton Civic Scholars, which I think all of you have met the Dayton Civic Scholars in one shape or form, because we bring them to Commission meetings at least once a year, hopefully more. This is one of our oldest programs, it's actually 20 years old now. So we're kind of in the process of looking at our vast alumni list, many who still live in the area, who are doing wonderful things in local government, and who are doing really great things across the nation as well. So this is a three-year program, really focused on helping students become active citizens, civic professionals, thinking through what is democracy? What does it mean to be an active citizen in my community? So we work with community, nonprofit, governmental partners, hearing from Commissioners in the city and the county, as well as nonprofit agencies. We, they have a weekly mini-course where we kind of look at what are foundations of civic engagement, what are foundations of democracy, and then it kind of scales to their senior year. They're working intentionally with community partners on a focused senior capstone. So currently, our seniors are working on, they're interested in housing, so we're identifying which partners and scoping out their projects. And we're trying to be forward-thinking for our junior cohort. We're working with Mike Squire and thinking about how can they work with the community engagement team and work with neighborhood focus. So it's a really exciting program. We have 20 years' worth of history that we're, like I said, we're trying to really build on and take this program into the future. What does this program look like for the next 20 years? And just a fun fact, the first director of the program was Commissioner Dean Lovely, so there's been an intentional connection with the City of Dayton since its founding. So, yeah, I just want to continue to build on that. I've been in my role for a year, so I'm now in the visiting phase, like I said, what's the future of this program. So thank you all for your support, and happy to have you all speak to our students anytime and intentionally connect them with what's going on in the city.
And related to that, we're hosting Propel Ohio at University of Dayton in October. And so we're really excited to have students from across the state talking about voting. FIT Center, Dayton Civic Scholars, we're taking the lead on hosting that for the state. So we're excited about that. Ashley?
Hi. Good morning. I'm Ashley Wright, Director of Educational Equity Programs, which is a program that is focused on place-based work. So essentially, there are several different ways that students, University of Dayton students, can participate in the program to provide support to our local schools and nonprofits. But there are three things that I kind of wanted to highlight with the program today, and that is the community impact, the UD student experience, as well as the educational component, which kind of undergirds both. For community impact, students are placed within nonprofits, for example, Burner Literacy Center, Girl Scouts of Western Ohio, the In Dream Center, to support those directors on any type of initiative related to education. But most notably, our placements are in neighborhood school centers, Dayton Public Schools, Neighborhood School Centers. And they support the family resource coordinators. And that support can look like a range of things. It can be administrative duties, it could be small group, one-on-one student programming. And so the students can do that as an education impact partner within the cohort. So that cohort structure is similar to some of our other programs in that the students are a part of a team, they are placed in a neighborhood school center or nonprofit for the entire year, which I think is really important when we talk about community impact, that prolonged, sustained service and support our community needs, but it also helps our students understand and get a more holistic experience, it's a lot more meaningful. And so we do that, continued support for local schools and nonprofits, but also the director, the director of the program, which is similar to all of our programs, we have a vested interest in providing service and representation on committees, subcommittees, and work groups, which I also think is important for us to be a part of those conversations, because we hear directly from partners about what they need from us. And so it's walking a tight rope sometimes when you're doing place-based work. You want your students to get a really good, robust experience, but you also want to satisfy partner needs. And so for educational equity programs, we do education-based support at no cost to our partners. So that's community impact. The student experience is really robust. Educational equity programs really is kind of an umbrella in several different ways that students can participate. You can be a part of the cohort program, which is a year-long, and embedded within that is a mini-course experience. You can be a flyer coach, and flyer coaches are our high-dosis tutors that focus specifically on literacy and math tutoring. In Dayton Public Schools, as well as Trotwood-Madison, we were able to expand last year. And then our Neighborhood School Centers tutors. Those are work-study-funded students who are placed, and I try to primarily place them in Neighborhood School Centers, because they need the most support, but we did have two, at Dayton Dream Center, which is a wonderful emergency services nonprofit on the east side, and they do great work there. And so then the educational component, which I think is the most important part, like I said, undergirds both, is the students who are placed within the community are getting continued professional development and education for me and other community members. So we look at education from a holistic perspective. We're not just looking at education happening in the school. How does the neighborhood impact educational outcomes? What are policy that influence and inform what happens in the school? And so we're coming together during this, the weekly mini-course, and we're having these conversations, and they are learning about critical self-reflection, which is an important component of any type of service-related work or community engagement. And we're looking at the rules of community engagement. What does it mean to not do harm when you go into communities? And then I think that's about it.
You know, one thing's that, I mean, all of our programs, I feel really grateful for the strength and insight of my colleagues. You know, with Ashley's program, the study came out recently where they found that one of the biggest upward mobility drivers for first-generation students is if you put first-generation students in these sort of reciprocal tutoring, place-based work within schools, for example. It increases the college-bound desires of the students, of the K through 12 kids that are being engaged, but it also increases the learning and efficacy of the university students that are being engaged. It's a double upward mobility driver. And so it's, you know, we're really grateful to have our students in Dayton Public Schools and with a range of nonprofit partners, and we're also grateful for the impact those students have on those K through 12 kids. I'm going to run through a couple of our other programs. Ethics and Leadership Initiative, we are really grateful to actually have students placed with the City of Dayton through Ethics and Leadership. This is a certificate program primarily, where students are getting academic credit through interdisciplinary program, and then we have a summer internship program. And for summer internships, students are fully embedded with community partners throughout the summer. One of the things that FIT Center has really actively started to do through all of our internship programs is we do what we call, we equity-base our internship programs. In other words, for typical internships, most students have to be relatively affluent to do a non-paid internship or a low-paid internship. We want every single student at the University of Dayton to have an opportunity to engage in an internship. So we pay them, you know, so for the Ethics Leadership Initiative, the students are paid $7,500 for a 12-week internship. And the goal is that we have students who might not be able to take an opportunity for an internship, be able to do this. We place them with a partner where they're going to get education and mentorship. We have a weekly mini-course where they learn about ethics and leadership and are able to unpack their internship experience. And then they, you know, they receive a living wage, so that they're able to, so that they're able to not only support themselves during the summer with housing, clothes, we know internship clothes aren't cheap, and food, but also come back to campus with a little bit of money, just as they would have if they worked full-time over the summer in a non-internship placement. And so our Ethics and Leadership Program, Ashley's Educational Equity Program, also a shorter internship program, but also equity-based internship, and our Health Equity Fellows, who I'll talk about in just a second. So we're really grateful for this Ethics and Leadership Initiative, which is a primarily donor-funded initiative. Our Health Equity Fellows is one of our newer programs. It's a three-year cohort program. We had our first group come in in academic year '24-'25. There's 11 of them. They are currently placed with nonprofit partners right now. We have three or four Dayton Children's, several at Miami Valley Child Development. We have a couple with Homeful and a couple with, I'm looking at the last partner.
Dayton Children's.
Did I say Dayton Children's?
Did you say Dayton Children's?
Dayton Children's. So they're placed with four different nonprofit partners, and their moving-forward goals, those partners have, around social determinants of health. So we have students who are invested in having careers in medicine, but they're learning things that most people never learn, not only in their college pre-med programs or in medical school. Our goal with this is that we do so much opportunity building, so much experience building, and so much mentorship with this program, and we're really intentionally drawing students from Ohio and Montgomery County. Our goal is that we give them so many opportunities and so many connections regionally that when they go off to medical school elsewhere, or they go to do health law, or they go to do health administration, when they launch their careers, they want to come back to Dayton. So we view this, you know, both as a workforce development tool, a talent retention tool, and really working to impact social determinants of health within Dayton. And so we're really excited, we've got our second cohort coming in. This program has the most diverse students, both in the current year and the coming year than we've had typically in FIT Center programs. So we're really excited and grateful for that. Our FIT Center Faculty Fellows, these are 10 faculty who come into the FIT Center and they partner with regional organizations on projects that are identified by those organizations. So for the 2022-2024 to 2024 cohort of faculty, those projects were all in Northwest Dayton. Faculty proposed those projects, and then we vetted them to the Northwest Dayton Partnership, and the Northwest Dayton Partnership told us which projects they were interested in us funding. And so those projects are sort of still ongoing, but that fellowship with us is, the sort of two-year fellowship is officially ended, but once you're a FIT Center Faculty Fellow, you're kind of always a FIT Center Faculty Fellow. Our current cohort coming in for '24 through '26, those projects are focused on East Dayton, and we shaped that a little bit differently. In this case, we asked for, we learned from '22-24, this time we asked the partners what projects they wanted, and the partners brought to us projects. And then we reached out and recruited faculty to support those partner projects. We had them basically interview and meet with the partners, and the partners chose whether they were interested in working with those faculty. And so we have 10 faculty coming in this year for partnerships that are, many of them are in East Dayton. There's a couple that we call crossover projects between Northwest Dayton and East Dayton. And so we're going to see what success looks like for this group, and we'll probably tweak it a little bit more. You know, the FIT Center, we like to learn as we're going. And so, but we're really excited about the work that this group is going to be moving out. We have a brand-new Public Humanities and Arts Program that is launching this year. We have two major projects that are going along with that that we're really excited. The first is a partnership with Dayton Metro Library and numerous other nonprofit partners in the area, so the African-American Visual Artist Guild, the Paul Lawrence Dunbar House. And we received a National Endowment of the Arts Big Read Grant to read a book called "Homegoing." So we're doing a large, community-wide read across Montgomery County, primarily focused in Dayton. And we have an opening reception in September. That's going to be at Dayton Metro Library, Maine, and we're really excited about that. But we were really But we were really grateful to receive a $20,000 grant from the National Endowment of the Arts to move forward this, this collaboration across our region. And we're hoping for, to continue to spur collaborative work around the arts and humanities within Dayton and Montgomery County. We are also hosting Bing Davis' exhibit at 1401 South Main Street in our building. That will be from September through November. And so Bing Davis is putting together numerous original art pieces for this exhibit, as well as displaying some pieces he's already done. It's open to the public. You know, our space brings, you know, numerous people to it, hundreds of people a month into 1401 South Main Street. And so with the new Roger Glass Center for the Arts, we see our space as a real opportunity to collaborate around the arts. And so we're really grateful that Mr. Davis was so invested in, in hosting this, and that we're doing this in partnership with the Dayton Foundation and the Dayton Development Coalition. Throughout the year, we are going to be hosting a range of different events. In the spring, we have plans to have the African-American Visual Artists Guild to have art in our building. We're partnering with faculty across campus and nonprofit partners in the area of the arts and humanities to move forward projects that they're interested in. Last, but definitely not least, is our River Stewards and the Rivers Institute. Like Dayton Civic Scholars, this is one of the oldest programs within the FIT Center and incredibly active. This focuses on watershed conservation and environmental justice in the region. One of the things that we've done really, interestingly and excitingly, I think was innovative, is for years, we had a mobile, we had a River Mobile that moved throughout the city of Dayton and Montgomery County to do watershed education with, with kids. Each year, about 2,500 to 3,500 kids went through the River Mobile. You would see it parked, parked in neighborhood lots at public schools. It was environmentally unsustainable and definitely not sustainable during COVID. So we partnered with the Boonshoff Museum of Discovery. The first floor of the Boonshoff Museum of Discovery is now home to the, what was in the River Mobile. We went from having 2,500 to 3,500 kids experiencing it a year to 350,000 kids experiencing it a year. So it's a wonderful collaboration. We're really grateful to, to the Boonshoff for partnering with us, and we think was an innovative way of, of collaborating. The River Stewards support that work frequently on Friday afternoons. The students go in there. They support work with nonprofit partners across the region around environmental justice and conservation goals. So that is our, our presentation. We would love to take some questions if we have time.
Do we have some, some time, comments? Commissioner Tuskloss, all those questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I really appreciate you all being here this morning. Just a couple of questions. First, how's your husband doing? In recovery?
Oh, yes. He has one more surgery, but he's doing much better. And he no longer feels hopeless.
I wanted to ask Ms. Wright, the student experience, I think I have this right. What is the average number of, of students that participate in the, or that participate in the schools and the community organizations? What, what is the total average number?
Total, so this year, we have, I literally just started writing it down. Okay, so this year, we have five interns currently that are in neighborhood school centers. Fairview, EJ Brown, Kaiser, Ruskin, in Cleveland. And this upcoming year, we have eight in the cohort. So I would say anywhere between, this is a big range, because the flyer coaches is actually a lot more.
And we, Ashley, do we figure it was around 45 students a year that are, that are, that are going through the programs and engaging between flyer coach and the cohort program and the, and the two, and the, and the work-study students? We figured about 45 students.
And so my program is different in the, in the way that it's kind of like broken down into several different ways that you can participate. Flyer Coach has the most students. Year '22, '23, we actually had 28 students at 14 different DPS elementary schools. And that was through, that was made possible through the ODE Grant for High Dosis Tutoring.
How are they recruited? Is it a matter of word of mouth, or is it?
So we, yeah, we do have a strategy for flyer coaches because it is concentrated on math and literacy. So we recruit out, out of the School of Education. It is open to any major. We did have a few non-education majors both years, in '22, '23, and this year. But we recruit out the School of Education, specifically the phonics classes. They have the most background education on phonemic awareness, letter sounds, things like that. And so what we're looking to do is refine the, the method and, and the foundation of the, of the tutoring strategies to include district personnel more than we have in the past. And again, the collaborative process has been great, but having district curriculum personnel there to provide training will, will help. We did see growth in Troutwood-Madison test score, so that is a win for us. And so it looks like we're going to be placed in three Dayton Public Schools Elementary Schools this year, and then two in Troutwood. So I would say about 45 total across all of the subprograms under educational equity programs.
Thank you. And then I just, I have two more questions. Excuse me. I know we pressed for time. In regards to, to the HEAT program, thank you very much again for your, your presentation. Just wanted to know, because you touched on a little bit about how, when looking at the infant mortality rate in the various zip codes, 02, 06, 17, I think 05 as well. So what additional initiatives or conversation is HEAT being involved in as it relates to helping to reduce the infant mortality rate in those, in those concerning zip codes?
Thanks for that question. I think what I found most surprising is that the numbers in, in 02, 17, 06, were, I looked at pre-term, and I looked at low birth weight, which are two clinical indicators of infant mortality. And the numbers there were 16, and 15.7 and 16.8%. So I think a dual-pronged approach. There is never one answer to anything. So I think the, the implanting and building of leaders in, in, that are maternal experts that the community can trust is, is a really good start because you need to have relationship. Therefore, I believe that it's going to increase your ability to go to the doctor to have questions because you have an advocate. We've also created a compassionate care guide that, that says, this is how a, it's basically, this is a, this is how a nicely formulated, non-racial bias appointment should go. This is, this is the kind of eye contact. This is what we're calling compassionate care. We're also meeting with the interns and residents as they come in this term at Boonshoff. And we're going to be doing many grand rounds with them to educate them on the numbers, the population that you're dealing with, and the patients' feelings of being isolated, not listened to, and being talked down to. And then one of the benefit prongs that came about was working with community health workers. So I had a chance last week to go to Cassano, where they are training through a grant catering is training community health workers. And bringing to these 12 women's attention the numbers and asking them what do they believe is causing it? And getting community health workers that are going to be in these areas involved is a, is a different approach where they could almost, they will be partners with doulas. And they can be, they, they can be eyes and ears for the community and education. And working with Queens Village in the next week, going and, and just spending some time with painting, and art, and talking, and bringing these numbers to the attention of the community. My hope is to go to every neighborhood association and share their numbers and get their input on what they want to have happen.
Thank you. I was kind of looking in, in the realms of, like you said, it's a different, it's multi-pronged, if you will, approach. And so with that, is it, it concerns, and I know you mentioned you were having some detailed conversations out of these various cohorts, the 12 women that are now being trained. But looking in the areas of the quality of life, whether it's access to healthy foods and decent, stable housing or, or barriers to transportation, all of those different areas that affect our overall the health and safety of, of our women who are in fact expecting in that area and addressing the infant mortality rate overall. So that was.
And that was the most exciting thing about my visit to Cassano. Not only did I get a chance to partner with, with public health as well as Dayton Children's, but my, my old professor mode kicked in because I'm a nursing professor. And so we had activities and we had, you know, break into small groups and then feed out. And they gave those exact answers. What's causing the problem? Transportation, district school changes, violence, uncertainty, food scarcity. And so to hear these problems that are being brought up, but we're not focused just on the baby, but they were, the community health workers were literally looking at what's in the community that's affecting this, that's bringing these numbers up. So I think we just need to keep getting new ways of conversation.
Thank you. And last question.
Can I add to that real quick? So our Health Equity Fellows, who are embedded with partners who are working on social determinants of health, are in many of these neighborhoods that, that have the high rates of black infants, infant return mortality. So they're impacting social determinants of health. So when they're with Homeful, they're working with the mobile food pantry, or with Dayton Children's, they're working actually with one of the doulas, right? And so there's, there's, you know, the Health Equity Activation Think Tank and the Health Equity Fellows is sort of a tool-pronged approach to systems change around health within Dayton and Montgomery County. And we're sort of, how do we educate? How do we launch the next generation of doctors? But, you know, the doulas are also the next generation of healthcare providers, which is really pretty amazing. So we have students on the ground doing the work. We have doulas on the ground doing the work. And then we're also educating people. Yeah, thank you.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. Just out of curiosity, the Public Humanities and Arts Program is, I know you mentioned that you all were awarded a $20,000 grant, and you're working in collaboration with a number of various partners. Is there a final project? Or is that a part of the exhibit from Bing Davis? Or what is the, the end result of that?
Yeah, so the National Endowment of the Arts, the Big Read Grant is this national program that brings communities together around a book that the community.
The book itself.
Yeah. So the book itself and the act of engaging conversations around that book is really kind of the, the power about it. Homegoing by Yah Jassy is a story of two women from Ghana, one who was sold into slavery and one who marries into a colonial situation. And it traces their roots through to contemporary times and brings up issues of, of human trafficking, of, you know, of, of sort of multi-generational family connection, but also poverty. And so it's a really complex story. And so really bringing people together to talk about a range of issues and also sort of think about what, how literature and art meaningfully engages the human condition. So we do have, you know, we're going to have a creative, you know, African-American Visual Artists Guild wants to do a creative writing project around it. So there's projects that'll come out of it, but the act itself of the shared work with Dayton Metro Library and other partners is really the, the project. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, well, thank you for the, for this update and kind of finding this, this understanding of the modules that you are bringing to bear in this community and how, how you're kind of digging in. It's kind of goes with what Dr. Svena said when he first got here, that he was going to come outside of the fences and, and interact with the community at large. So I am, I am really happy that there are some workforce components kind of weaved and throughout many of your modules. My question to you is, how are you monitoring the outcomes? And how far do you go out into the future to gauge the impact? Are your students, your students staying here? Are, are they engaging once they graduate? And then the students that they touch, kind of, how are you monitoring and gauging the impact? Does that work? I don't know.
I'm going to let Sam talk about that. Is that okay, Sam? Because she's the Director of Assessment. But I will say, I mean, Darius Beckham was a Dayton Civic scholar. Maloney was a River Steward. You know, there are FIT Center, Stacy Swiker was one of Brother Ray's first students, or first grad students. So, you know, FIT Center students, you know, alums, we are embedded.
Yeah, I would say that, that's an area where we have work, we have work to do. I think, you know, something I'm trying to do since we have 20 years of alumni with Dayton Civic Scholars, we're trying to, you know, our student employee, who's also a Dayton Civic Scholar, Jacob Verdic, he's, you know, he's trying to really reach out to alumni. Where are you now? And, and we're trying to first get their contact information and see how Dayton Civic Scholars impacted them, where they are. We know anecdotally, there, there are a lot in the area. City managers of, you know, of cities close by and different, different places. But we're trying to get that data a little more and get that, what, what were the outcomes? What, you know, how was this program affecting you? How's it still impacting you? And how would you like to mentor the next generation? So I think, I think the, for the older programs like River Stewards and Dayton Civic Scholars, I think we were doing some work backwards. I think the newer programs, especially with grant funding, those outcomes are embedded into the model from the beginning. So I think, since they're so new, I think health equity, we don't know quite yet. But I, I think that those are embedded in, you know, the work, the foundation of the program. Because it is, what are the community health outcomes? What are the student outcomes?
Yeah, so the Health Equity Fellows Program has grant funding from a, called the Scarlet Feather Fund. We also this summer received Public Health Ohio funds for those students that are Ohio-based and for their internships this summer. And so, you know, as we all know, when you, when you're applying for grants, built within that is the assessment mechanism. So we are being really intentional. And Ashley works to track student outcomes for the students in the K through 12 settings with her schools. It's a little harder to get some of that data because it's, it's data connected to, you know, DPS.
Yeah, so I was going to actually speak to that. So my program, being a newer program, I did the teacher thing when I first started, which is, you know, what do they want first? But also, how am I going to track impact or progress? And so the form that I've been using now is through qualitative, like, data collection when people decide to respond to that. It, it definitely gives great feedback about ways to improve the program. Working with schools is tricky. And, and I have to come up with, we have to come up with data metric measurement, like mechanisms that are not test scores because that, those are, that's protected, like, information. And so, for example, the Ohio Department of Education grant that made Flyer Coach possible, we did, we were able to get test scores, map test scores for those students. So we have a pretty clear picture of how our flyer coaches, also known as high doses tutors, impacted their education. Like, did these students show growth? Because it's, it's math and literacy. And they get the math and reading map tests. So that was clear. But I, I am still working on tracking data that are not qualitative measures. Like, what do the numbers look like? I will say that I have had a couple students change their majors to education, if that counts for anything. Just a student a couple days ago, or yesterday, emailed me to let me know Hannah. She, she wants to be a teacher now. So that happens. They're really interested in, in education. And I think something that I will be tracking myself as a PhD student is, to what extent does prolonged community engagement and exposure to the education system encourage students to stay in urban education? Because we know in teacher education programs, they are placed in a controlled environment during student teaching. And as someone who's a teacher, it can be, depending on who your cooperating teacher is, it can be a snapshot of what really happens. But if you're placed with a really, really good teacher, sometimes it's not always indicative of what you might experience as a first-year teacher. But that, having the knowledge of the student more holistically, But that, having the knowledge of the student more holistically, I think having that insight as a teacher education major, my hypothesis is that it will keep them as teachers in urban education if if they know what that looks like before they go in, so.
And especially UD, which is, I mean, focused on services to start with. So the students are self-selected to come to UD, they're self-selected to come to your program.
Yeah.
So that, that's an audience that's ripe for that sort of development, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Me too.
And I will also say, one of our Ethics and Leader interns who's working with the Dayton Foundation, they're currently putting together a survey for current students to be like, what is your attitude about Dayton? Do you plan to stay currently? You know, they could be sophomores through seniors. They're kind of polling some of their current attitudes so we can understand what the current, what students feel now and maybe how they feel after they graduate.
That might be good data for you all, too.
Yo, that's interesting, interesting to me because that was in a program that was sort of like the the one poverty issue that President Johnson put in place in Model Cities Program. And they worked with Central State University in terms of identifying a hundred people from the community. And twenty-five of us were veterans by design. And we went through a program where we were teachers aides during the day. Got paid for being a teacher's aide and then went to school in the evening. I started that program in my sophomore year because I was an industrial technology, art design major. And I wind up, not changing my major, but again, education degree as well in the process and wind up going into education. But we had a fallout. The program was so comprehensive that it allowed people to be able to display their their work ethic, their ability to get along with others, their ability to do classwork, their ability to just deal with even sometimes leaders who didn't have their act together, but still navigate through the process. And I think there were probably about fifty that wound up coming out of the program. Unfortunately, the school system, they did not want to do DC when they opened schools. They only, they manufactured a layoff. So by the time that most of us would graduate, they could not get into the system when they came in gradually. But that fifty that came in wound up being some of the most dynamic teachers that Dayton Public Schools had. They looked at data as well in terms of some of the kind of things that were happening because some of the backgrounds, the individuals brought to the table in terms of what was happening from that perspective. It is something that I've always revered and would like to have back in terms of the system because especially identified having males, black males who were veterans to move into a system that had a very strong shortage in terms of black male educators.
What was the name of this?
It was the New Future, not New Future, though. This was the Model Cities Program.
Model Cities was the big federal program. This was the local, what they call the Hundred, the Hundred.
Yeah, Career Opportunities Program.
There you go.
If he needs more information, follow.
Yes. YC has the library of all of that.
Yeah. Yeah, so so overall, just, I mean, just overall, listening to all the things you guys are doing that fits. I know my personal model, but it also fits listening to my commissioners. Having been here the last couple of years of the National League of Cities Mayor's Educational Task Force, the aspect of talking to different mayors across the nation, and I threw this concept out, if you want to have good citizens, you have to grow them, okay? Your, your program, all the things that you do and talk about are exactly in line with what I think is necessary. Sometimes people think that you just have, you don't really go to school, come out and that's it. It wasn't just be a great place. We know that that's not necessarily, necessarily the case, excuse me. But the aspect of what they do once they come out and having discussions and debates in terms of why we support education, why we support K-12, it's not just because I'm a former educator, but I talk about the aspect that if they at the graduation, you're not going to college, you're not going to the military, you're not gainfully employed, you're our problem. You're the, you're, you're a problem for our police, you're a problem for the social service agencies that are across the city. You are a problem, you may have some offspring, and you may not have a job. So there are other individuals and organizations that have to support your lack of being able to support the city and the things we do from that perspective. So, yeah, applaud your work.
Go ahead, if you want to talk. I was just going to jump in when you're done.
Oh, no, go ahead.
No, go ahead. Whatever you're going to say.
Oh, I just wanted to say how, you know, amazing the neighborhood and nonprofit are, you know, they're so committed. You know, Sharon, you were talking about, you know, infant mortality. So we had to hear and talk with the Neighborhood Association and the Neighborhood Nonprofits about infant mortality, you know, and education, you know. So many of the people, when they talk about housing in the neighborhood, highlight the issues with education, you know. They understand that they need to see improvements in the schools as part of, you know, growing back the the neighborhood, you know. It's just a lot of energy and passion, you know, and just, I'm so impressed with the City of Dayton staff as well, you know. Jeanette and Abby have both been wonderful to work with, so I just wanted to say that.
Oh, you, you can say that anytime. I just want to say that it's encouraging and it's actually a huge relief to hear you all so engaged on these topics that are some of the most enduring and difficult problems in our neighborhoods that we only have peripheral control over. We, we don't control the education system. We have almost no control over health. And so to hear these and to hear that the work you're doing dovetails so nicely in other ways with the work we're doing, you're educating the next generation of leaders, which is our business. Civic Scholars are great, but all of you and all of the, all of your different ways are educating the next generation of leaders. And that's like, like Mayor just said, is one of our biggest concerns. You're working on equity issues, which are, again, speaking of enduring problems, we've wrestled with our own police issues, we've wrestled with a lot of different issues, but we haven't been afraid to wrestle with it. And I'm so glad to see that's the same attitude that you all are taking. And I think that's necessary. I think that these are conversations we need to have and the action that needs to be taken. You said it a couple of times, it's important to be action, in action. So I just want to thank you, especially, especially on health issues, because we are so helpless when we go to the neighborhoods and we hear about these things. We can advocate, we can talk, we can make it known to the county or to the state or the feds what's needed. But when it comes to our own budgets, you know, we do not have those tools. We don't have the levers, the right levers to pull. So thank you very much for your efforts on that. We really appreciate it.
And so I want to add to that. So one of the things that was really exciting about our, our work around health equity is, you know, when I came into my role as Executive Director of the Fit Center, I noticed work around health was one of the gaps in our, our programming. And health is a precondition for, you know, success in lots of other areas, however, each of us thinks about our, our own health. And, but the Health Equity Fellows and Health Equity Activation Think Tank were really generated by a group of, you know, thirty or so nonprofit community members, a few UD faculty and staff, all coming together to say, you know, what are we going to do in Dayton and Montgomery County about our challenges around health? And what opportunities, what assets do we have in our region to help move this forward? So what I love is how is the Fit Center able to respond to things that are put in front of us by the, you know, by the community and then collaboratively together work to engage those based upon the strengths within our community? And so it's really exciting. You know, Sharon's leadership is really exciting. Moses Mesa, who's the Director of Health Equity Fellows, his work is really incredible. So, and then, you know, we have a really strong cadre of directors. The Fit Center team is, every single one of them is stellar and I'm really grateful to get to work with them.
Well, you know, this follows the, I think, the life concept of Brother Ray. Because he was part of this program, we had New Futures in nineteen eighty-eight through about ninety-five. And where it's a program where we got a twenty million dollar grant from the Annie Casey Foundation. And we put things in place primarily in three middle schools. But part of that process, and I was over those, those few schools, part of that process was to identify surveys, identify issues by surveys for young people about their thoughts about life. You know, when do you think, or where do you think you're going to be in five years, two years, three years? To see things change in terms of not thinking that I'm going to live beyond sixteen years old, not thinking I'm going to live beyond twenty-two, not thinking I'm going to have a family, not thinking I'm going to have a job, to see things change for the positive because of what we did in that process. And we did a lot of non-traditional educational programs. My, my discipline program was you stay at the school for three hours instead of getting suspended for three days. And you had to have one hour of mediation work with your school worker, one hour of conflict resolution training, which the day police did, and then one hour of cleaning up around the, around the school, school building with the custodians. And that culminated with getting dinner. So we had asked his parent before, you want your child to stay home for three days or you want to stay at the school for three hours? And they all, for the most part, said, let's stay at school for three hours. But the attitudes changed so significantly because we did training with staff as well as with students in terms of different programs. Then we spread the program through the elementary that fed into the middle schools and then later on, the three high schools. And we saw a major change in terms of attitudes with young people as well as test scores. Could we let them take the tests together, practice tests? And we let them take the tests in small groups. Then they wound up having a bit of test scores in the schools that were not using the same process. But anyway, it was all about fun because the main thing was helping them understand the value. So every day they had to do an affirmation about what they want to do in life.
Mayor, Darius has one quick thing and then we are going to go up to your works. I have two some briefings, so.
So you have some, you have some work to do at Fit Center, still left?
No, Ms. Vee asked me to comment on our internship program or the partnership with the Ethics and Leadership Program. So thank you all for the work session today, highly, highly contextual. We have had three summers of phenomenal interns between Anastasia Stowers, Jacob Burdick last summer, and this summer, Marion Pope. And no summer's been the same, which is typical of the mayor's office. Maybe each encountered different things and had to kind of assist and help in different ways. So the beautiful thing about it is it does build upon, you know, a young talent pipeline. We have the McIntosh Scholarship, of course, but getting young people to actually see how the city operates and works and be a part of the mayor's office has been very cool, I think, for them and myself, just having the support and the help. Sam, you spoke on the data, thanks for the question, Commissioner Shaw. I think it's huge to really evaluate how many young people who are graduating from our colleges and universities actually care to stay here. We need to know that, right? I, you know, I don't think I'm an anomaly, but it'd be good to really understand how well we're doing in that aspect. So thank you, Ms. Vee, for the opportunity to comment.
And Darius, if I could interrupt, and track if they come back too, because a lot of these kids are going to go to grad school somewhere else, just come back. That's, that's an important point, too. Sorry to interrupt you.
Well, thank you for our time with you. Any, any other questions that you all have for us or? Well, we genuinely appreciate the partnership with the city and, you know, we are the University of Dayton. You know, we, we are here, we are, we are present and we really want to work with you in meaning, in meaningful ways that you all and the residents of Dayton find to be, to be valuable. And so we're really grateful for this time with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.